Alderman Kerkowski. Alderman Lorick.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Kuzikowski.
Here.
Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Doug, would you lead us up?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everybody, please look over the minutes of April 16th. There's no omissions, corrections, or questions. We'll entertain a motion.
Kuzikowski will make a motion to approve the minutes from 4:16:19. Lorick will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
First up, we have a resolution to our retiring building inspector. Kathryn, when you are ready, please read that into the record.
Certainly. Resolution number 12060-050719, resolution of commendation to Edward Cieszkowski. Whereas Ed Cieszkowski began his employment with the City of Oak Creek in August 10, 1987, is a full-time building inspector, and whereas Ed has retired from his position as building inspector effective May 3, 2019, after serving over 31 years and eight months of full-time service to the City of Oak Creek. And whereas Ed was a very effective employee during his years of service with the City of Oak Creek Inspection Department, answering many calls and providing immeasurable service to the community. And whereas Ed received many commendations during his tenure at the City of Oak Creek, including recognition from Hunzinger Construction Company for his work with their new Midwest Dialysis Center, the Milwaukee School of Engineering for speaking to classes about his views and experience in construction management, and the Wisconsin Building Inspectors Association for his participation in their yearly Wisconsin Building Inspectors Institute. And whereas Ed received recognition from the Buildings Inspector's Association of Southeastern Wisconsin, holding all leadership positions, including Training Coordinator, International Code Council Liaison, Trustee, Treasurer, and Secretary. And whereas Ed was acknowledged by the State of Wisconsin, Department of Industry, Labor and Human Relations, personally thanking him for the effort and time put forth as a part of a fire-resistant team. And whereas Ed participated in the Oak Creek High School Job Shadowing Program, enabling several Oak Creek High School students to job shadow him, providing students a rare and unique look into the building trades. And whereas Ed, during his years of service, has performed his duties admirably, always looking out for the health, safety, and welfare of this great community and the residents of the City of Oak Creek. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the common council of the City of Oak Creek, for and on behalf of the residents of the city, that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Ed for his years of dedicated and faithful service to the City of Oak Creek and the Oak Creek Inspection Department, and that best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Ed and his family on his retirement. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and the city clerk be and is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Ed, passed and adopted the 7th day of May, 2019.
Thank you, Kathryn. Anybody like to say a few words? Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it goes without saying that Ed was an extraordinary employee. We were lucky to have him for almost 32 years. Clearly, he took his duties very seriously. He believed in everything that he and the rest of the staff were doing. He lived it, as evidenced by some of the things that are contained here in the proclamation, his speaking to classes, his job shadowing program, his volunteer duties with the Building Inspectors Association. So despite all that, and we all know Ed be very mild-mannered, very pleasant, friendly. I don't recall seeing him too agitated in all the years that I've been working with him. And there was cause to be over the years with the workload, particularly in the last couple of years. So but on his last day of work, staff got together to wish him well, and he mentioned how much he enjoyed coming to work and that he actually loved the people that he worked with. So that sums up Ed, I think, very well.
Well said. Councilman, anybody?
I guess I'll just add a few things. I really can't top what Mike said, other than he was really a professional from the day I stepped in here, and really the direction and the way he kept the city on pace with all the building that was going on. He didn't do it single-handedly, but he really believed in the team concept. He will be missed. I was at a celebration. I stopped in there for a little bit. Wish him a long, happy retirement, because it was well-earned. Again, the city would not be in the position it is if it wasn't for the talents of people like Ed. So, thank you, Ed, on behalf of me and the common council. Motion, please.
I'll move to approve Resolution 12060-050719, resolution of commendation to Edward Cieszkowski, retiring building inspector.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
We have another resolution to our retiring water and sewer utility treatment plant operator. Kathryn?
Resolution number 12059-050719, resolution of appreciation to Jerome Bochat. Whereas Jerome Bochat began his employment with the Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility on April 7, 2008, as a full-time treatment plant operator. And whereas Jerome faithfully served as a second-shift plant operator for 11 years, and whereas Jerome was responsible for ensuring public health by operating the treatment plant to produce award-winning water quality that far exceeded quality regulations. And whereas Jerome was a dedicated plant operator of the Oak Creek Water Treatment Plant, which has been recognized with the Partnership for Safe Water Phase III Directors Award, and worked during his entire career to maintain the status the utility has held for 20 continuous years. And whereas Jerome was a member of the operating staff of the Oak Creek Water Treatment Plant, which has been recognized as the first plant in the state of Wisconsin and one of only 19 in the nation to achieve the prestigious Partnership for Safe Water Phase IV Presidents Award in 2015. And whereas Jerome has retired from his position of treatment plant operator with the Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility, effective May 2, 2019, after completing 11 years and one month of full-time service. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the common council of the City of Oak Creek, for and on behalf of the citizens of the City of Oak Creek, that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Jerome for his years of dedicated and faithful service to the City of Oak Creek and the Water and Sewer Utility, and that best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Jerome and his family for future years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Jerome Bochat, passed and adopted the 7th day of May, 2019.
Thank you, Kathryn. Mike, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Really briefly, congratulations to Jerry. He put in a nice career. He actually had a career at Tower before, and then he came here and finished out his career here, 11 years as a second-shift operator, did a very good job at that, so we really appreciate the service.
Great, thank you, Mike. Councilman, anybody?
No. Yes, I just want to wish Jerry a happy, long retirement. Again, our water department is nationally recognized. That doesn't happen by magic. It happens by individuals like Jerry that come in every day diligently, do their job professionally, and they're the best in the business. And again, wish him a long, happy retirement. He will be missed. So on behalf of myself and the common council, enjoy your retirement.
Motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Gail, I'll move to approve Resolution 12059-050719, resolution of appreciation to Jerome Bochat, retiring water and sewer utility treatment plant operator.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is a mayoral proclamation for poppy days. Kathryn, you got a lot of reading tonight.
No, that's okay. Good. Poppy days, May 3, 4, and 5, 2019, at the Olschlager Dahlmann American Legion Post 434 and Auxiliary. Whereas the Olschlager Dahlmann American Legion Post and Auxiliary 434 have set aside Friday, May 3, Saturday, May 4, and Sunday, May 5, 2019, to honor all our veterans of all wars by distribution of poppies on these days in our city. And whereas the annual distribution of poppies is one of the American Legion Posts and Auxiliary's many veteran projects for which we are proud. And whereas all money is received from the distribution goes directly to the following: 60% of all money received will be distributed for direct aid to veterans and their families in need in the City of Oak Creek. 40% of all money is received will be distributed for scholarships and loans for veteran children, rehabilitation projects at Sablaq EVA Medical Center, Wisconsin Veterans Home at King, Wisconsin, Christmas gift shop at Sablaq EVA Medical Center, Camp American Legion, a rehabilitation center for veterans, National Child Welfare Foundation, and all veteran affairs and rehabilitation programs. Be it therefore resolved that I, Daniel J. Bukavich, mayor of the City of Oak Creek, do hereby proclaim May 4, 5, and 6, 2019, to be poppy days in the City of Oak Creek. Be it further resolved that I encourage the citizens of Oak Creek to contribute generously for the annual poppy distribution by the American Legion Posts and Auxiliary 434.
All right, thank you, Kathryn. We're very blessed today. We do have the poppy princess with us. If you'd like to come on up and with your mother, if you want to introduce yourself and say a few words. How are you going?
Hi, I am Audrey, the poppy princess of Post 434, and I'd like to say thank you for having me here and letting me distribute poppies all around this meeting room.
Thank you. Are we the first group you're visiting as poppy princess, or?
We did the bike blessing on Sunday.
Excellent.
She got a new Harley shirt and got to walk around the bike blessing.
You probably did pretty well there. Them people are awfully generous down there.
Turned on glasses.
Yeah. True. If she needs it. If not, she can make her rounds.
Thank you for having me.
Oh, no, thank you for coming forward and allowing her to participate.
She signed up for it. She wrote a letter.
This is a tradition here.
I trust you.
These were Steve's, but I think Steve used to leave them here.
Buddy poppy days, Mayor DeZek, BFW Post 8482, May 10, 11, and 12, 2019. Whereas the annual distribution of buddy poppies by the veterans of foreign wars of the United States, Mayor DeZek, Post 8482 of Oak Creek, Wisconsin, has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922. And whereas the annual distribution of buddy poppies will be held in Oak Creek on May 10, 11, and May 12. And whereas BFW buddy poppies are assembled by disabled veterans, and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans, and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans. And whereas the basic purpose of the annual distribution of buddy poppies by the veterans of foreign wars is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Bukavich, mayor of the City of Oak Creek, do hereby urge the citizens of this community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through the purchase of buddy poppies on the days set aside for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our veterans. Be it further resolved that I urge all citizens to wear a buddy poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms that we continue to enjoy as American citizens.
Thank you, Kathryn. Anybody have any words for poppy days? If not, okay, we will move on to item number eight, and those are the mayoral aldermatic appointments. So item eight, for the record, small claims committee, Alderman Dukenyak, and library will be Alderman Lorick. No change there. Number nine is consideration of a motion to concur with the mayoral aldermatic appointments. Why the other two weren't in there? Oh, it's by code? Excuse me. But going forward, we have water and sewer, Alderman Gail; landscape and beautification, Alderman Kuzikowski; tourism, Alderman Gail; community development authority, Alderman Gail, and Alderman Kerkowski. So any discussion? Noted. Look, thank you all for serving on those and keeping continuity there. Yep. And if we could get a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Gail, I'll move to concur with the following mayoral appointments as shown.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Item 10, I'm going to turn over to President Gail.
Thank you, Mayor. Common council appointments are unchanged from last year. I wouldn't know if there's one typo on item I, Finance Committee. I serve as chairman of that committee, so let's just make note of that, Kathryn. Other than that, appreciated everyone's service. Continuity is a good thing, as Danny said, so serves the community well. Appreciate that.
Great, thank you. Item 11, consideration of a resolution amending the 2019 budget. Bridget?
Good evening. So each budget year, the common council and staff have discussion as we're going through that budget on whether the city wishes to continue to participate in the expenditure restraint program. Remember that that program is a program where we have to review budget year over budget year and stay within a set percentage that the state gives us. And if we do decide to stay under that percentage limit, we're given a revenue payment as incentive for controlling our expenditures year over year. For 2020, that revenue payment would be $297,520. And our percentage that we needed to stay under per the state was 4.4%. So when I went in to go file our online worksheet on the Department of Revenue, there is a .01% rounding correction that we need to do, and that's why we have this budget amendment in front of you. So we are literally reducing our revenue offset by $2,392, and reducing our expenditure contingency line item by the same amount. And that is the .01% that will get us to be able to qualify for that payment. So if you want to hold that revenue and continue going forward, that's what we recommend, the budget resolution in front of you.
Thank you, Bridget. Questions for Bridget? Seeing none, motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we appreciate Bridget and the DOR getting this squared away. It saves the couple hundred big ones for the good guys, I'd say, right? With that said, Gail, I'll move to approve Resolution 12061-05071, amending the 2019 budget.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Item 12 is consideration of a motion to concur with the mayor's appointments to following boards and commissions, item A through H. Please take a look. If there's any questions, comments, if not, motion.
Thank you, Mayor. And as you've, I think, said all along, these are folks who really go unheralded in terms of serving the community, so we really do appreciate these folks stepping up and serving and continuing to serve. And for the new folks, we appreciate their entry into the committee mix. So with that said, Gail, I'll move to concur with the mayor's appointments as shown.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Item 13 is an informational with our treasurer's report. We have Barb in the house today.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so for the month ending March 31, 2019, our beginning balance was $48,465, Ending balance, $49,283,147.39. Interest of $102,874.59. And that was an increase from beginning to end of $817,456.63. We did have a tax settlement for the February and March tax collection of about $5.3 million. It also included, we have to distribute a portion of the lottery and gaming credit that we received in March, which was just under $1.1 million.
Questions for Barb? Um, thank you, Barb. Item 14 is consideration of a motion to authorize publication of the write-off for the 2017 delinquent personal property tax. Barb?
All right, so once a year, I come to you. It's per policy on delinquent personal property tax. What we do per the policy is we do a publication, and this is for the 2017 delinquent personal property tax. And so it's for the balance of what's left that hasn't been paid. Just so you know, it's, they've been turned over to collections, what we are allowed to do by law already. So the publication amount would be $8,990.95. That includes interest and penalty through May 31. And the write-off is, as I said, it's the remaining balance in the delinquent personal property tax account for the principal portion only, and that's $11,132.17. We will continue collections on that.
Great, thank you. Questions for Barb? Seeing none, motion?
I'll move to authorize a publication and write-off for the 2017 delinquent personal property tax per the attached reports.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
And Barb, thank you for the last comment, because the public always asks us if we're just letting them skate on that, that we're not pursuing it. So, thank you.
Not me.
Item 15 is consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map for the properties at 3961 East Oakwood and 10303 South Chicago Road. Doug?
Thank you, good evening. This is a CSM for the properties that the mayor just mentioned on Oakwood Road and Chicago Road. Divides it into four conforming lots within the IRS 3 zoning district. Council, recall that a portion of these properties, recently we zoned to IRS 3 to have that kind of more continuous and consistent zoning across the face of these four lots. Plan Commission has recommended approval of the CSM and would also advise the council to do as well.
Any questions concerning the CSM? Okay, motion?
Toman will make a motion to adopt Resolution number 12058, approving a CSM map for Steven Crager for the properties at 3961 East Oakwood Road and 10303 South Chicago Road.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item 16 is consideration of an ordinance adopting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for the properties at 1001 West Ryan and Lot 4, the certified survey map, number 9085, and the address is to be determined. Doug?
Thanks again. The FBN is requesting that the planned land use category in the future land use map, a part of the adopted comprehensive plan for the properties at 1001 West Ryan Road and one of the lots of the CSM that was done for the Ryan Business Park, be changed from planned industrial to planned business. Just allows for a certain number of different options as far as the marketing of that property. Just as a note, I mean, these are predominantly the lands which are north of the south branch of the Oak Creek, 13th and Ryan. A portion of those properties, or actually two of the existing properties, are already shown as planned business within that land use category. So this would make that whole area consistent with that planned business designation. The Plan Commission has held a public hearing on this request, and they have recommended to the council that the land use change be completed, and the staff's recommendation that the council approve this as well.
Great, thank you, Doug. Questions for Doug? Seeing none, motion?
Mayor, bear with me. Gail, I'll move to approve ordinance 2935, adopting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for the properties at 1001 West Ryan Road and Lot 4, the certified survey map, number 9085.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 17 is the license committee. We usually turn it over to Alderman Kerkowski, but council president or another member of the committee like to take it? Oh, and we do have a speaker on item eight of that. So please be aware.
Thank you, Mayor.
And 19, eight and 19.
Steve would say, I trust you've had a chance to review the list in the council report. No questions, we'll entertain our selected or requested speaker.
It is Mr. Dagnar.
Arden? Arden Dagnar, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. The purpose of the health is, is the purpose, the council, is to assure the health and safety of the residents, plus education. Where do we draw the line? Some need others to help sustain life and prevent scams. Therefore, how much tax money should be spent on health and safety and education? The Board of Health said that alcohol-free events must be encouraged. Let's have events. Let's have events. That can be encouraged without the requirement for control. Why are city employees ignoring their role models by engaging in addictive drugs? The number-one health days drugs, by the International Institute of Drug Abuse, lists a number of these items. And going through the index, you see marijuana on top, peer pressure, alcohol, the medical consequences, prescription drugs, drugs in your brain. This is all coming down on us. And how many of these can we afford?
Thank you, Mr. Dagnar.
Any questions of the council report? Any questions of the council report? None? With that said, then, Gail will move to adopt a License Committee of Recommendations as listed on the May 7th, 19 License Committee Report.
Dukniak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Thoman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
And item 18 is our vendor summary report. The list is in front of you, and any questions can be directed to the appropriate department head that's present.
I'll move to approve the May 1st, 2019 vendor summary reported in combined total amount of $531,392.62.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Thoman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
And item 19 is consideration of a motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, Parent 1, Parent G, Wisconsin statute, to discuss potential litigation related to the opioid crisis. President Gail?
Thank you, Mayor. Gail, I'll move to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub G, Wisconsin State Statute, to discuss potential litigation related to the opioid crisis.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukniak.
Aye.
Thoman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
We do have one speaker wishing to speak on this item, and they can speak at the conclusion of closed session when we return. So we'll now convene in the closed session.
Gail Scale second.
Roll call.
Alderman Thoman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Item 21, no action will be taken at this time, but Mr. Dagnar, if you'd like to make a comment, you are welcome to come up.
Arden Dagnar, extension of my other comments, I do want to give you information that two years ago, South Milwaukee United Against Drug Abuse Coalition, a resource folder, two years ago, I was a part of this. That's what this folder, and it's, but where do we stop? As I said before, practically everything becomes addictive, and the persons with addictions become criminals eventually, apparently. So that's, that's the problem that we have, and you council members have too. What part of our lives can we control with licenses and with education? But on the other hand, the state decides that gambling is their problem. They'll, they'll put casinos up if you get the right group, and they'll give you, give you all kinds of, if you're ever in the Army, you know that craps was the big thing. Everybody lost their money and didn't have any food for the, for the weekend. So how can we use tax money niggardly, that's a bad word, economically, and handle all these addictions that are coming around? In fact, it was interesting that the, I heard the President of the Wisconsin Medical Society on TV stating that there is no such thing as medical marijuana, that there has not been proven in their usual system that they have of determining proof of this type of use.
Thank you, Mr. Dagnar. We appreciate all the information.
How's that?
I, we appreciate all the information.
Okay.
We won't be taking any action at this time.
The big problem is that where are the role models that exist now to direct people to when we, when we are losing all ideas and have addictions on every hand? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we do adjournment, just a couple announcements. I will not be present the next two meetings. Alderman, President Gail will be chairing the meetings, and at planning, Alderman Kirk, Guzakowski's gonna take that duty. And I also just want, on behalf of the common council myself, wish all the mothers out there a happy Mother's Day this weekend. Hope the weather gets better for you on your special day. So with that, adjournment, please.
Lorick will make a motion to adjourn.
Dukniak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Thank you.